Good afternoon, everybody. Can sergeants please start their recordings?
Recording in progress.
PC recording has started.
Cloud recording is up.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's hybrid stated meeting. At this time, can all panelists please turn on your videos for verification purposes? To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices to vibrate or silent. Majority Leader Powers, we are ready to begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, please turn all electronic devices to vibrate. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of June 2nd, 2022. Majority Leader Keith Powers like to thank everyone today for joining us. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, with a degree in justice.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presenta.
Ayala. Barron.
Here.
Botcher.
Present.
Brannan.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice.
Presenta.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Nurse. Jose.
Here.
Palladino.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley. Rivera. Salamanca. Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velazquez.
Here.
Vernikov. Williams.
Present.
Wan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi Daniel Sherman of West Side Institutional Synagogue, located at 120 West 76th Street in Manhattan. Welcome, you can come up.
The Jewish tradition has always shown tremendous respect for the business of governance. In a celebrated passage in the Talmud, the Jewish tradition articulates its appreciation of governmental responsibility in the following poetic manner: "Even if all of the seas would be ink and the reeds that grow near the swamps would be the quills, and heavens would be parchment upon which the words would be written, and all of the people would be scribes. All of these are insufficient to accord the depth of mind necessary to properly govern." The fourth-century Babylonian sage of Mesharshiya notes that the source for this assertion is stated by King Solomon, the wisest of all men, in his Book of Proverbs, as he states: "Like the heavens in their height and the earth in its depth is the mind of kings unfathomable." These words of the Talmud relay the burden placed upon those in government. Those in government are tasked with making decisions on behalf of a populace that can affect millions of lives. According to this Talmudic passage, the challenges faced by government officials are tremendous and daunting. The need to properly assess competing and often contradictory values, each with its own merits, is a task that requires selfless dedication along with honest and difficult decision-making abilities. One can be disheartened by the responsibility to address the issues that directly impact the city's residents and can have dire consequences. However, despite the challenges involved, the Talmud makes clear that such decisions are definitely within human grasp and hopefully are aided by divine guidance. As our devoted City Council weighs our city's future, on behalf of all residents of this wonderful city, we both express our gratitude to each and every one of you for your dedication to the inhabitants of this city, recognizing the burden of your responsibilities as the aforementioned Talmudic passage relates, as well as blessing you each with divine guidance to properly chart New York City's future. A city that by God's grace and human pursuit possesses a deep history of serving as a beacon of harmony amongst its diverse population. May God bless New York City and its government officials for years to come. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Sherman. I'm now going to ask Councilmember Gail Brewer to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Rabbi Sherman. I just want to say one thing about this amazing synagogue because it was founded in 1917 by Rabbi Goldstein, who was considered a mavic rabbi. He basically was the, developed the pioneering institution of modern orthodoxy in the United States. And it was located at the Mount Morris Theater and then moved to the Columbia Typewriters Building at 37 West 116th Street, which is now the Salvation and Deliverance Church. And it had sermons, basketball, and cultural activities, and an Olympic-sized pool giving the nickname "The Shul with a Pool." And it also served 3,000 people a day and housed 67 clubs, very, very active. And I want to thank Rabbi Sherman because he continues in this tradition. Of course, by 1920s, it had outgrown that location and it's moved today, as it is today, 1937, to West 76th Street. And I've had the opportunity to participate in many of the activities at this amazing shul. It also houses Jassa Club 76, a place that I love. So I want to thank Rabbi Sherman because he joined the institutional synagogue in 2013. He has studied at many different wonderful places of academic excellence. And he has been in Kansas in the past, and he has motivated in many different ways young people continuing the Rabbi Goldstein's tradition. So I want to thank him for joining him today, joining us here today. And I want to thank him and his family for always being so welcoming whenever I'm at the synagogue. Thank you very much, Rabbi.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. We're now going to hear from Councilmember Carr for the adoption of the minutes.
I move that the minutes of the stated meeting of May 5th, 2022 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. Moving into today's agenda, messages and papers from the mayor.
M67, Mayor's Revenue Letter.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
M68, HRA District Resource Statement.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M69, City Planning Commission Appointment.
Rules, Privileges, and Elections.
Petitions and Communications.
None.
Land Use Call-Ups.
M70, Resilient Edgemere Community Initiative.
Cubbed on call-up vote, I would now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala. Barron.
Excuse me, I stepped away for a minute. We're voting on...
Land use call-ups, sir.
Call-ups, or does that have anything to do with LU 39 and 40, 41 and 42?
No, sir.
Okay. Aye.
Thank you. Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote.
Rich and Grady.
I just wanted to speak regarding the resilient edgemere proposal as this is the very first step in this process to just share that I'm holding conversations with HPD and community stakeholders to ensure this proposal meets the needs of the community, considering the significant development that is underway on the Rockaway Peninsula. And we want to make sure that this development matches the fabric of the community and meets the critical needs in terms of transportation, infrastructure, and health infrastructure for the community. But with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse. Jose.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Thank you. Rivera. Salamanca. Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velazquez. Vernikov. Williams.
Aye.
Wan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Borelli.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye on all.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We'll now hear communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder, masks are encouraged to be worn throughout the stated meeting in council chambers. Today, we are voting on several legislative land use and finance items. Before I begin, I'd like to thank members of the public who signed up to testify or submitted written testimony for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Last week, the council concluded its executive budget hearings, capping off a month of hearings led by Finance Chair Justin Brannan. Woo-hoo! I want to express my gratitude to Chair Brannan, members of the Finance Committee, Joint Committees, and the entire Finance Division led by our CFO, Tanisha Edwards, for all of their hard work in helping us to reach this point. Bravo, Finance Team! We look forward to continuing productive conversations as we work towards adopting a strong budget that helps our communities and our city recover. On Monday, our nation observed Memorial Day to honor and commemorate service members who paid the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. Our city remains forever grateful for their commitment, dedication, and sacrifice. Coming from a family with a tremendous legacy of military service, the observation of Memorial Day is very important to me, and I hope everyone had a safe and meaningful Memorial Day. Yesterday marked the beginning of LGBTQ Pride Month, which is celebrated every June to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising that took place in our city. Pride is a time to reflect on the victories as well as the ongoing struggles confronting our LGBTQ communities. We celebrate pride to ensure that LGBTQ New Yorkers are seen, heard, and supported. We know that LGBTQ Americans still suffer from discrimination, bias, and violence. Next week marks six years since the mass shooting at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando, Florida, which was a deliberate attack on LGBTQ and Latino communities. As I have said in this chamber before, we must address hate in all of its forms, and this council is committed to preventing violence before it occurs. June is Caribbean-American Heritage Month, when we celebrate our Caribbean-American communities for your cultural, social, and political contributions to our city and country. We have so many groundbreaking Caribbean-American leaders here in New York City, so thank you all for what you do on behalf of this city. On Saturday, our Jewish communities will be celebrating Shavuot across New York City as you gather with your family and friends at synagogues to enjoy shared meals and light holiday candles. I wish a happy and safe Shavuot to all New Yorkers who are celebrating. And finally, on June 12th, we will celebrate Loving Day, marking the anniversary of the historic Supreme Court decision Loving versus Virginia that ended anti-miscegenation laws and allowed interracial marriage in the United States. With so many communities facing violence and hate, it is especially important, now more than ever, to celebrate love and stand in solidarity with our multiracial families throughout the country. Now, let's dive into our agenda for the day. We will be voting on the following land use items. 1930 AD Avenue will facilitate the alteration in use of the existing building as a preschool slash day school in Councilmember Riley's district. We have two applications in Councilmember Wrestler's district. The first, 840 Lorimer Street rezoning will facilitate the development of a 10-story mixed-use residential and commercial building with 74 housing units, 24 affordable units, and 28 off-street parking spaces. The second is 103 Lee Avenue rezoning. Will facilitate the development of an eight-story mixed-use residential and commercial building. It will include 52 housing units, 16 affordable units, and 15 below-grade parking spaces. The council will modify to remove the 100 Lee Avenue site in order to avoid the direct displacement of the existing neighborhood retail and service businesses currently on that site. 146-93 Guy R. Brewer Boulevard rezoning will facilitate the construction of a new mixed-use building in Majority Whip Brooks Powers' district. The council will modify the proposal to better reflect the surrounding community character, and the commercial overlay will remain in place to bring existing businesses into conformance with zoning. Finally, I will note that as a result of the applicant having withdrawn its 145 Museum of Civil Rights proposal, all of the associated land use items before the council are now void, and the review process is terminated. We are filing these land use items to remove them from our calendar. We will also be voting on the following finance items. Introduction 103, sponsored by Councilmember Brannan, which would authorize an increase in the amount to be expended annually in the Sutfin Boulevard Business Improvement District, an extension of the boundaries of such district, a change in the method of assessment upon which the district change in such district is based, and an increase in the maximum total amount to be expended for improvements in such district. This bill would also provide for the dissolution of the 165th Street Mall Special Assessment District and the dissolution of the Jamaica Center Mall Special Assessment District, which would merge into the Sutfin Boulevard bid. We will also be voting on a resolution that will establish the discount percentage for the early payment of real estate taxes at one-half of 1% per annum for FY 2023. Thank you to our staff, Malcolm Butehorn, Ray Majewski, and Emra Adav. Finally, we will be voting on the following legislation. Introduction 208A, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, seeks to improve the inspection processes for self-closing doors. This bill will increase the instances where self-closing doors and noncompliance with other fire safety laws might be identified by requiring HPD and FBNY to share data regarding fire safety violations and for each agency to use that data to better inform their building inspection protocols. This bill also requires HPD to take a more proactive role in inspecting for self-closing door compliance. Each year, HPD would have to select 300 buildings to inspect with the aim of targeting higher-risk buildings like the Twin Parks Northwest Apartment Complex in the Bronx. At our last stated meeting, we voted on an important package to ensure tragedies like the Twin Parks Fire never happen again, and I am proud that we continue to build on this work. Thank you to our staff, Audrey Sun and Brad Reed, for your help on this legislation. And finally, we will be voting on a resolution sponsored by Majority Leader Keith Powers, the Chair of our Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. This resolution would accomplish three things. First, the resolution provides that the council and its committees and subcommittees, with the ability to use video conferencing to conduct our meetings, provided that a quorum is physically present in the same physical location where the public can attend. A council member can only participate virtually if they are unable to be physically present due to an extraordinary circumstance such as detailed in the resolution, such as disability, illness, or caregiving responsibilities. Second, when council members make use of video conferencing, the public will be allowed to attend the meeting by video conferencing and participate by video conference if it is a meeting during which the public can participate. And third, the resolution enables me to make determinations pursuant to the State Open Meetings Law during a state disaster emergency declared by the governor or a local emergency declared by the mayor, including suspension of any and all in-person participation requirements of the State Open Law Meetings Law because the circumstances necessitating the emergency declaration would affect or impair our ability to hold in-person meetings. Thank you, Majority Leader Powers, for your leadership on this resolution, and thank you all for your attention. Now, I turn it back into the hands of the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We are now going to move into general discussion, general order, rather. Do we have any council members signed up or would like to sign up? I see first Councilmember Barron, and then we'll go to Councilmember Brooks Powers for general orders.
Well, thank you, Chair. I just want to mention three things. One, that I was really honored to be at all of the hearings and all of the sessions on the Finance Committee, and I want to say I hope we listen to the public because they rejected this governor's, this mayor's budget, the reductions of the Fed money, the reductions from the pegs, and so many programs we cut it when we have, cut when we have anywhere from $7 to $11 billion to use to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I hope we hear the public and not just mention that the public was there. Secondly, I want to also say to the Speaker, this is the third time you didn't mention, first time you didn't mention Malcolm X's birthday, now you didn't mention...
This is on items that we're voting on today. Did you want to move to general discussion instead?
It's not general discussion.
This is general orders right now for today's vote.
This is what the Speaker spoke on.
Okay, this is for today's vote, though. We're...
I understand that, but you should mention Black Music Month and you should also mention Juneteenth, those important months that she mentioned in her general order presentation. And for the items, I also want to congratulate 145, and they did not withdraw it because they didn't do the Civil Rights Museum. It was because the council member, Christian Jordan Richardson Jordan, did a tremendous job, even though Al Sharpton and so many others wanted it. She beat Sharpton and powerful developers with a coalition in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. We now go to Councilmember Silvina Brooks Powers.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak on LU 39 and REZO 218. I've already spoken on the matter at previous meetings, so I won't repeat myself with the full context. I just wanted my colleagues to know that I am in support of this item and also want to extend my appreciation for the applicant and his team, the land use staff, and my own staff, as well as, most importantly, the community, for crafting a proposal that everyone is happy with. So I just wanted to share my support to my colleagues for further clarification on this. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to hear from Councilmember Wrestler.
Just want to comment briefly on the two land use actions that are in the 33rd Council District. Both of these items certified before we took office this year, so we had some limitations on our ability to shape the projects, but I think we got them to a better place. We insisted on community benefits agreements that have been signed by local community development corporations on each of these projects to ensure some meaningful accountability that the promises made to me and my neighbors will be followed through upon. At 103 Lee, this is a development in the heart of the Satmar community, Jewish community in South Williamsburg. The developer planned, has an existing five-story building, was planning to build eight stories of just one and two bedrooms. We now have a building that will have, that is subject to MIH and where we have six three-bedroom units to better meet the needs of local families. And at 840 Lorimer Street in Greenpoint, we have a building where 35% of the housing will be affordable, and the developer has also committed a million, up to a million dollars that will go to a brand-new dog run in McCarran Park, among many other commitments around local hiring and being a good neighbor and partner with adjacent landlords. You know, these are, you know, our district, the 33rd, has experienced more new development than any other over the last decade, and it's critically important that as projects go up, we see more affordable housing and we see deeper infrastructure investments than we've seen in the past. And I think these two projects are a step in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other council members like to speak on general orders? We're going to, we're going to hear from Councilmember Richardson Jordan.
Yes, I, and I apologize for being off-camera. I really, really do not feel 100%. But I, and I was going to save it for later commentary, but I do just really want to thank my colleagues, and you all know who you are, who were part of texting and conversations and just building in this, in the fight for contextual housing in Harlem and actually affordable housing in our district, and just willing to stand in solidarity. And I want to give a special thanks to the Chair of the Zoning Subcommittee, Chair Riley, because the hearing for the 145 project went on for hours, and he just did an excellent job sharing and listening to the public and listening to my community. And, and you know, just thank you to you and to council members for the support.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else signed up. We can move into today's agenda with the report of special committees.
None.
Report of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Intro 103, Sutfin Boulevard Business Improvement District.
Cubbed on general orders.
Pre-considered REZO 191, Discount Percentage.
Cubbed on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 208A, Self-Closing Doors.
amended and cubbed on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 50 and REZO 209, and LU 51 and REZO 210, 840 Lorimer Street rezoning. 840 Lorimer Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 53 and Reso 211 through LU 57 and Reso 215, 145.
Coupled with B5 pursuant to letter of withdrawal.
LU 58 and Reso 216 and LU 59 and Reso 217, 1930, 80 Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, pre-considered Reso 204, Open Meetings Law.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Intro 179A, Non-Traditional Workplace Report.
Amended and laid over.
General Orders Calendar. LU 39 and Reso 218, 146, 93, Guy Brewer Boulevard rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 41 and Reso 219 and LU 42 and Reso 220, 103 Lee Avenue.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commission of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the Clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. Ariola.
Aye on all except for Reso 204.
Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
And by the way, Majority Leader, relax when I speak. It's not going to be as bad as you think, but you can't just keep cutting me off and nobody else, and a lot of people speak on issues that are not technically on the general order calendar for voting. I've heard it plenty times. Relax, man. Everything will be all right. But anyway, on LU 49, which I think is all market, and LU 41 and 42, even though the council member said it was affordable, the area median income in that area is $57,000, almost $60,000, and yet 30% of the units that are supposed to be affordable are at 80% of the AMI. That's 16 units, and the other 36 units are market. And then for the LU 51, 74 units, 35% of them are supposed to be affordable at 80% of the AMI, which is above the neighborhood AMI. So I am voting no on LU 39, 41, and 42, and 50, and 51. Aye on all the rest.
Williams.
Thank you. So the bill that we are voting on today was to honor the lives that were lost in the devastating fire that took place on January 9th at Twin Parks and to ensure that a tragedy like this never happens again. Some of the victims migrated from West Africa and settled in Twin Parks Towers to achieve the American dream. The victims were individuals that had been volunteering in local community groups, attending local mosques, enrolled in school, and hoping for a future that would empower themselves and their communities. Intro 208A will require landlords to maintain self-closing doors on all residential floors and post-fire safety notices in residential buildings, and it will also require HPD to take proactive action on inspection of buildings. Functioning self-closing doors are the most effective barriers to temporarily inhibit the spread of flames and smoke. It is incredibly important that these doors are inspected regularly to ensure functioning properly. And so residents deserve to feel safe. I want to thank Speaker Adams for her continued leadership on this issue, Councilmembers Sanchez and Felice for their advocacy, and I'm just proud to sponsor this bill. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor, and just one more plug, acknowledging June as Gun Violence Awareness Month and expressing the importance of doing this work. I want to thank my colleagues who joined the Hood Caucus at our rally today. We look forward to working with you all collaboratively. Thank you so much, Majority Leader.
Vote, Councilmember.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bacher.
Aye on all.
Brannon.
Aye on all.
Brewer.
Aye on all.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye on all.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
No on pre-considered Resolution 204, and aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Excuse me, aye on all.
Farias.
Pass.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Hanif.
Aye on all.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
Aye on all with the exception of Reso 204, which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
May I have permission?
Permission granted.
To vote on all land use, to make a motion to, for unanimous commit consent to vote on land use call-ups.
Go ahead.
And all items on the general caller. I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
And the other ones?
Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
Yes, Mr. Majority Leader, I'd like to make a motion for unanimous consent to vote on the land use call-up items and all items on the general orders calendar.
Go ahead.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye on all.
Nurse.
Aye on all.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
Aye on all except Reso 204, which I vote no.
Ressler. Richardson-Jordan.
Aye on all.
Riley.
Aye on all.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Shulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Velazquez.
I want to make a motion for unanimous consent to vote on the land use call-up item and all items on the general orders calendar. And then aye on all.
Yep, go ahead. Thank you. Wand.
Aye on all.
Jaeger.
Aye on all with the exception of Introduction 103 and Resolution 204. Thank you.
Farias.
I vote aye on all, thank you.
Thank you. Borelli.
Aye on all except pre-considered Reso 204.
Powers.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of Resolution 204, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, and land use items 39, 41, 42, 50, 51, with accompanying resolutions, which were adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and Intro 103, which is adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. And we have a revised land use call-ups vote, which is 48 in the affirmative and 0 in the negative. We'll now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. There are no resolutions to vote on on today's calendar. We're going to now move into general discussion. We will begin with Councilmember Gennaro.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I've got some bills going in today. I want to call my colleagues' attention to Intro 470 on the phasing out of number four heating oil. This has been done with myself, my co-prime sponsor, Caban. I thank her for her leadership. The council has a, has a long history with making heating oil cleaner. There's grades number two, which most people are familiar with, number four, which is dirtier, and number six, which has been phased out altogether. You know, 10 years ago, working with the state, we took the sulfur out of number two oil altogether. We made number four much, much cleaner by reducing the sulfur in it by like tenfold, and we phased out number six altogether, which is really, really filthy. Pardon me. But so, so now we have Intro 470, which would, oh, and in, you know, 2014, after we did all that other stuff, after I left the council, they set a phase-out date for number four oil at 2030, and Intro, Intro 470 would seek to move up that date five years to 2025, not something I ordinarily like to do, which is sort of go back on a deal that we have with the people that burn number four. But I would contend that the world has changed, and it's, it's not as expensive, and it's not as, you know, difficult to make a conversion to a, you know, cleaner fuel. There's also like 45 million ounces of this stuff being burned every year, and about 22% of it is burned by the city of New York itself, mostly in school buildings. We can do a lot better than that. So, so I would urge people to support this bill, and there's going to be a hearing on it this, let's see, June 7th at noon, so we're going to get into it. And I got a couple of seconds left. Also, Intro-
Councilmember, can we ask you to wrap up?
Okay, 16 seconds left, no? Okay, all right.
Keep going. We'll give you 15 more seconds. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the clock. Intro 468, that deals with creating an invasive species board that has to do with plants, something we really need to get done. I was going by my clocks, hoping I didn't break any rules. I'm with Charles. People should just relax, but thank you very much, and so we're all good. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you. Sorry for the discrepancy. We'll go now to Councilmember Kagan, followed by Councilmember Shulman.
Thank you. First, I would like to stress one more time that improving public safety is number one priority for our city. Just several days ago, in the middle of the day, in the heart of West End of Coney Island, two groups of young folks started to shoot at each other. Total of 36 bullets were used, and it was a miracle that nobody was hurt. We must do better to protect our communities. Also today, together with my colleague Lynn Shulman, I'm introducing Intro 479, a bill which will mandate pedestrian crossing intervals at intersections adjacent to hospitals, libraries, schools, and senior centers. You all know why it is so important that we all have safe, long-lasting pedestrian crossing intervals at intersections near these locations. It is pure common sense. In our great city, we can't put pedestrians on a back burner. Children going to schools, family and friends visiting their loved ones in hospitals, people visiting their local neighborhood library, older adults attending their local senior center, all deserve the same care and attention we give to those who drive. Having safe and reliable pedestrian crossing intervals at such locations is crucial, so they will be truly accessible to all New Yorkers. So I urge all my colleagues to sign into Intro 479 to make our city accessible to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And I go to Councilmember Shulman, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to call attention to Intro 508, a local law to require family building benefits for employee, for city employees. As we know, science and medicine have advanced greatly over the last several decades to allow individuals and families struggling with infertility to conceive and achieve their family planning goals. However, these assisted reproductive technologies can be incredibly expensive, costing an average of $17,000 for just one round of in vitro fertilization, for example. The average cost of adoption of surrogacy is even higher. In early 2020, a new state law went into effect, which required large group insurance policies and contracts, including the insurance provider for most New York City employees, to cover three cycles of IVF used in the treatment of infertility. State law prohibits insurers providing the required IVF coverage from discriminating based on an insured's personal characteristics, including sex, sexual orientation, marital status, or gender identity. However, in order to qualify for coverage, an insured seeking IVF must be diagnosed with medical infertility. This results in the exclusion of LGBTQIA+ families and individuals that are uncoupled or asexual. Additionally, individuals wishing to freeze eggs or sperm in order to preserve their fertility and become pregnant or conceive at a later date are also not covered by this law, as such decision is considered quote-unquote elective and not the result of being diagnosed with infertility. This bill would right the wrong of this existing discrimination, and it allows city employees the opportunity to plan their families more affordably and equitably. This bill would do so by requiring the city to establish a benefit for family building to cover some or all of the costs of assisted reproduction and adoption, I'm sorry, reproduction and adoption for city employees. At a time when our nation grapples with a crisis of family planning, where many will no longer have the option to plan and achieve their fertility goals and needs, New York City needs to lead by example. I want to thank Speaker Adams for taking the lead on this incredibly important issue, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on this bill.
Thank you. And I go to Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Councilmember Menon.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm excited to introduce two bills today that are deeply personal to me and my community. Intro 472, which I'm introducing alongside Councilmember Lewis, will establish a pilot program to train doulas and provide free professional doula services to New Yorkers. Having recently given birth with a doula by my side, I know how critically important they are for providing emotional, physical, and educational support. I know my experience could have been drastically different without Paola Giraldo, my doula. Doulas also serve another deeply important purpose. They're another advocate in the room who can ensure a positive and safe birthing experience. This country has one of the highest rates of maternal mortality among high-income countries, especially when it comes to women of color. When people use doulas during pregnancy and birth, they're two times less likely to give birth, sorry, they're two times less likely to have birth complications and four times less likely to have a low birth weight baby. Those are life-saving statistics. I'm proud to expand the pipeline of doulas available to moms and parents and increasing and increased employment opportunities for New Yorker. This, alongside the bill introduced by Councilmember Hudson, builds a pipeline for more women to have positive experiences like mine, and I also want to recognize my midwife, Miss Odessa Finn, straight out of Wood Hall. On the thread of expanding access to what should be essential services, I'm also introducing Intro 473 alongside Councilmembers Ressler, De La Rosa, and Ayala, which requires that text to 911 and Next Gen 911 is available in the designated citywide languages. Currently, if you text in a language other than English or Spanish, someone will FaceTime you to speak, potentially putting people that need help in more danger. This bill will ensure that New Yorkers from all backgrounds can access the services they need at the most critical moments. Please join me in signing on to Intro 472 and 473 to increase opportunities for care and support for New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Menon. Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Menon, followed by Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing a package of bills that would advance New York City towards universal childcare. I want to, first of all, thank my co-prime sponsors, Councilmembers Ayala, Caban, De La Rosa, Gutierrez, Hudson, Joseph, Lee, Lewis, Narcisse, Riley, Schulman, Stevens, and Juan. New York City is facing an acute childcare crisis. The city's lost over 1,000 childcare facilities in the last seven years, and yet at the same time, over 100,000 childbirths happen in New York City. According to studies, an estimated 93% of families with young children cannot afford center-based care for their infants and toddlers, and 80% cannot afford somewhat less expensive home-based care. This is completely unacceptable. I invite my colleagues to sign on to the following bills. Intro 486, which would create a childcare advisory board. This board will have the power and duty to make recommendations on legislation, regulation, policies, procedures, and initiatives to make childcare more affordable and advance New York City on a five-year plan to implement universal childcare. Intro 488 establishes a grant fund to assist childcare programs at significant risk of closure. Intro 489 develops a childcare certified building program that will increase the number of childcare facilities. Intro 487 requires the city to create an online portal that provides information on childcare subsidies. And intro 485 requires the city to create a comprehensive website that lists every childcare provider. Also, I'm proud to be part of the numerous Roe v. Wade bills being introduced today, including Reso 200, declaring January 22, 2023, as Roe v. Wade Day in honor of the 50th anniversary of Roe. And lastly, intro 490, co-sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, which would establish an office of reproductive health within the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Councilwoman Lee, followed by Councilwoman Nurse.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Today, I'm proud to be introducing intro 481, which would help property owners across the city address the recurring issues of sidewalk damage. I am proud to, I am proud to be co-farming this with our Councilmember Coleman Jaeger. And the notice of sidewalk violations that are issued to property owners can oftentimes complicate refinancing and selling of properties. And oftentimes, a lot of people repair their sidewalks only for the city to come back later and redo the sidewalks themselves. To promote efficiency and reduce overlap, this bill would require the city, before issuing a notice, to verify whether DOT or parks already have plans to repair the sidewalk flag in question, and refrain from issuing the notice if a repair is scheduled within 90 days. This bill would reduce the burden on homeowners and keep our sidewalks in good condition for years to come. And oftentimes, they spend thousands of dollars repairing and then have the city come and do it again. So, thank you so much. I encourage all my colleagues to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And I go to Councilwoman Nurse, followed by Councilwoman Rikabon.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Today, I'm introducing a handful of bills related, as usual, to waste rats' resiliency in plastics. With BP Mark Levine, I'm hoping the city will conduct a study on identifying categories of single-use plastics. That should be prioritized for reduction. With BP Antonio Reynoso, we are hoping to move forward the existing work of DSNY in determining feasibility of commercial waste being tipped at our wonderfully-built, state-of-the-art marine transfer stations. I joined CM Abreu and Botcher in asking our city to tackle rats through pre-construction planning and proper waste disposal. And with Councilmember Krishna, we hope to work with parks to identify ways local composting can be encouraged on appropriate and bright-sized parks-owned spaces. And lastly, with CM Brooks Powers, we're hoping for a study for how solar-reflecting pavement can keep our heat-vulnerable communities cool. Thank you, colleagues. I'm looking forward to following up with you all to discuss more.
Thank you. Now here from Councilwoman Rikabon, followed by Councilwoman Brewer.
Thank you. I'm proud to introduce three pieces of legislation designed to ensure that New York City is a safe city for all those in need of abortion-related care. A declaration backed up by policy, backed up by data. So first, Res 197 with Councilmember Velazquez and public advocate Williams, officially declaring New York City a safe city for all those in need of abortion-related care. Second, intro 466 with Councilmember Hanif and public advocate Williams. That would prohibit the city from detaining or cooperating with any person or agency anywhere else trying to detain, someone for the provision of or aid in obtaining a lawful abortion performed here. And lastly, intro 465, which would require DOHM to work with diverse advocates and experts to produce a yearly report assessing our city's capacity to accommodate the increase in reproductive health care services, and recommending steps to bridge any gaps that it finds. Proud that these are items that will join others put forward by the speaker and my colleagues to truly ensure that New York is a safe city for all those seeking reproductive health care. And then also, it's Pride Month, y'all. It is Queer Liberation Month. And so I want to take this opportunity to remind folks that the first Pride was a riot, an uprising of Black and Brown trans women and queer folks against police brutality. At a time when hate violence is on the rise, trans kids are under attack, our constitutional rights hang in the balance, a time when queer and TGNC folks, who are people of color, who are immigrants, who are disabled, still experience homelessness, employment discrimination, criminalization, and more at disproportionately higher rates. I want to, yes, wish you a happy and joyous Pride Month, but also want to look to, honor, and carry on all that folks like Audre Lorde, Marsha P. Johnson, and Sylvia Rivera taught us, and wish you all a righteous, radical, and rebellious Pride Month. So thanks, y'all.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Brewer, followed by Councilwoman Hudson.
Thank you very much. I first want to thank the Speaker, the mayor, Hotel Trades Council, because it's my understanding, as well as, of course, the people in Albany, the bill that we've been working on for hotel conversion, which was, basically says, without getting into all the specifics, that we can convert some of these hotels to permanent, affordable, run-by nonprofit housing. And my understanding, as we speak, it has been through the Housing Committee, the Ways and Means, the Rules Committee, and is waiting to be voted on in the Assembly, having passed the State Senate. So it's almost a miracle, and it's a big deal. So thank you, Madam Speaker, because you had a lot to do with it. Thank you. Just a couple of issues. Certainly, Councilmember Powers has done your person's job with some of his bills regarding the commercial rent tax. This is a tax that only exists for Manhattan, unfortunately, from Murray Street up to 96th Street, across from river to river. And it's been the bane of my existence for a long time, trying to get rid of it. Councilmember Grodnik got rid of some of it. It does seem very unfair to the businesses post-pandemic, trying to survive in that area. So one of the aspects that I've always focused on, supermarkets, particularly ones that are smaller, that don't have a 1% margin in terms of sustainability. So we would like to get rid of that tax to those supermarkets. And there are other aspects of the CTR, CRT, that would be helpful. But this is one of them, and I hope that it passes, intro 464. And then, along with Councilmember Menon, we're all trying to get the governor to sign the Reproductive Freedom and Equity Program. It would do a grant program for women who are trying to get an abortion, because other states are so reactive, reactionary. So we look forward to your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Hudson, followed by Councilwoman Rivera.
Thank you, and happy Pride. Today, I'm introducing four bills central to my Black Agenda for New York City policy platform. These bills seek to address issues of racial, economic, and education justice in New York City: Black maternal mortality, universal childcare, and persistent discrimination against tenants. The first bill, which I'm introducing with Councilmember Gutierrez, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to conduct an education outreach campaign about services offered by doulas and midwives to ensure all New Yorkers know of free and low-cost resources. The second bill, which I'm introducing with Councilmember Julie Menon as part of her childcare bill package, will create a specific task force with the sole responsibility of investigating mechanisms to make childcare more affordable and accessible to all. It would also review how the city could provide additional funding and resources to providers and childcare professionals to support their work. The third bill, introduced with Councilmember Christian Richardson-Jordan, would ban landlords and building owners from discriminating against rent-regulated and rent-subsidized tenants by limiting access to elements of their building, including entrances, facilities, and amenities, like gyms, game rooms, outdoor lounges, or laundry facilities. It would also ban fees levied against rent-regulated tenants that are not levied against market-rate tenants for facilities or amenities. And finally, the fourth bill, which I'm introducing with public advocate Ramani Williams and 20 other council members, will declare June as Caribbean Heritage Month. Currently, there are more than 861,000 residents across the five boroughs who are Caribbean-born, most of whom are from the Dominican Republic, Jamaica, Haiti, and Trinidad and Tobago. New York City has one of the most diverse Caribbean communities outside of the Caribbean itself, and one of the most impactful, as many New Yorkers of Caribbean heritage and Caribbean immigrants served our city as frontline workers during the pandemic. In 2006, the federal government declared June as Caribbean Heritage Month. Now, the city council must follow suit and honor the contributions of the Caribbean diaspora to our city. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting Black New Yorkers by co-sponsoring these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Rivera, followed by Councilwoman Brooks-Powers.
Thank you. Happy Pride, everyone. Lots to celebrate this month. So I'm so glad to be here with you all, and I'll see you out in the streets. Today, I stand in proud, relentless, and unforgiving solidarity with my colleagues in the Women's Caucus in the city's first women-majority council to defend reproductive care access injustice in New York City. In the chambers, the Women's Caucus fought to establish the nation's first municipal abortion access fund, committing $250,000 to direct costs for abortion procedures, helping upwards of 600 people each year get the care they need, the care they deserve. Our fight did not end then, and it has not stopped since. With reproductive freedom under attack throughout the country, we have a responsibility and a mandate to protect the right to abortion care for all who seek it. Equitable access to abortion care is vital for social and economic equality, and for the right to determine our own lives and futures. Without reproductive freedom, we cannot know reproductive justice. Together with Councilmembers Rita Joseph and Jen Gutierrez, I am introducing legislation that will require every city-run healthcare site, center, or facility to provide access to Mifepristone, sorry, and Mifepristone at no cost to the patient. They are two abortion bills that are interesting to say. I'm also introducing legislation requiring the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to report on pregnancy crisis centers, to protect those who seek abortion care from their predatory and discriminatory efforts, as well as a bill in support of state legislation requiring the Department of Health to report on the unmet needs of pregnant New Yorkers. I urge all of you to join me in supporting this legislation. I want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership in defense of reproductive justice. New York has always been a safe haven for all those who sought abortion care. And as legislators and as the representatives serving New Yorkers, we must uphold that legacy. We cannot allow this nation, and certainly not the city, to go backwards on reproductive freedom and care access. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now here from Councilwoman Brooks-Powers, followed by Councilwoman Wrestler.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly speak in support of a few items that are being introduced at today's stated meeting. First, I'd like to highlight a resolution in light of the Supreme Court's callous decision to gut Roe v. Wade. This resolution calls on the state to pass legislation that will allow out-of-state physicians to provide reproductive health services in New York while they await full licensure. New York has long been a sanctuary for women seeking abortion and other reproductive care services, even before Roe v. Wade was the law of the land, and we will continue to be. I'd also like to speak in support of a bill I am introducing with Councilmember Nurse. Climate change is impacting all of us now, but marginalized communities face outsized impacts. Studies have shown that neighborhoods which were subjected to government redlining and other discriminatory practices are now as much as 10 degrees hotter than other areas during heat events, as a result of underinvestment in terms of trees and other building materials that help to regulate street heat. Our bill will require DOT to conduct a pilot program on the use of cool pavement. Using lighter-colored or permeable pavement material could have a big impact in keeping our city's streets cooler. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the two community figures from my district who will be honored with street co-namens. Oswald Granum, a native of Kingston, Jamaica, moved to Roseville in 1987 and quickly became a beloved community leader before his death in 2019. He was the first president of the 148th Drive and Community Block Association, and also founded the New York Bicycle Racing Association. And Wendell O'Brien, who was born in Trinidad and moved to Roseville in 1999, bravely served his fellow New Yorkers as a member of the Fire Department, and was deeply involved in the same 148th Drive Block Association. O'Brien and Granum were both cherished members of our southeast Queens community, and will both be honored with co-namens in Roseville. Thank you.
Thank you. And I go to Councilwoman Wrestler, followed by Councilwoman Hanif.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, colleagues. Every day, thousands of government officials and city contractors abuse their privilege in neighborhoods across New York City by misusing government-issued placards or using fake placards to park illegally. This is not just an abuse of power, it's a public safety risk. These cars illegally obstruct pedestrian space, endanger cyclists, and block accessibility. We need to stop issuing placards and start enforcing against illegal placard activity. That's why I'm proud to introduce two pieces of legislation to do just that. The first bill, intro 500, would cut the number of placards in circulation by revoking all placards issued to individuals for their personal vehicles if they do not have government plates, except in cases where those placards are collectively bargained or granted due to disability or as a clergy member. This would eliminate roughly 60,000 placards issued annually to federal, state, and city agency employees, including the NYPD. In many instances, these placards go to non-emergency agencies and are abused every day by workers who park their personal cars illegally instead of taking mass transit. The second bill, intro 501, which I am co-sponsoring with colleagues Carlina Rivera and Chris Marte, gives citizens the tools to report placard abuse when they see it. I want to give a shout out to my predecessor, Councilmember Levin, who introduced an earlier version of this legislation last year. Look, we have complex crises in our city, from housing to climate. Placard abuse is by no means the most urgent, but it is among the easiest to solve. So there is no reason to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Hanif, followed by Councilwoman Velazquez.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm so proud to be part of the first majority-women city council, and as a body that springs into action when reproductive rights are attacked. When the draft decision overturning Roe v. Wade was leaked, my colleagues rallied in the streets to make our voices loud and clear that New York will not go back. This abortion rights legislative package being introduced today shows we are not just talking the talk, we are walking the walk. I want to thank Speaker Adams, council staff, and all my colleagues for working diligently to get this important suite of bills on the floor so quickly. Intro 474, which I'm introducing today alongside public advocate Williams and councilmembers Williams, Caban, and Hudson, requires CCHR to conduct a comprehensive and language-accessible campaign to inform New Yorkers of the critical protections they have under New York City law. This includes the right to enter an abortion clinic without harassment, protections against employment discrimination on the basis of reproductive health decisions, including abortion, and the right to bring civil action if either of these are violated. And intro 475, which I'm introducing with Councilmember Caban, public advocate Williams, and councilmembers Lewis, Rivera, Hudson, and Farias, is designed to protect those who travel to New York City to receive an abortion due to restrictive laws in their home states. According to the CDC in 2019, almost 10% of abortions performed in New York were for out-of-state residents. We know that in a post-Roe world, this number will only continue to increase, and our city must be ready. We also know that these folks may be subjected to civil suits for accessing legal medical care in New York City. Our bill establishes the right to private action for those subject to these suits, giving them the right to countersue under city law. I encourage my colleagues to join me in sponsoring these bills and further cement New York City's status as a bastion for reproductive rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And I go to Councilwoman Velazquez, followed by Councilwoman Richardson-Jordan.
I'll pass.
Bless your soul. We're going to go now to Councilwoman Richardson-Jordan, and we'll follow by Councilwoman Narcisse.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick. I just wanted to say, coming out of Memorial Day, and you know, every single day, we need to value and acknowledge our veterans, and we must support our veterans. So I'm really excited to introduce, along with Councilmember Ayala, a bill that would require the city to provide additional rental assistance to disabled veterans. So I encourage my colleagues to please sign on and help with that fight. I'm also excited that Councilmember already brought it up, but to introduce with Councilmember Crystal Hudson, intro 1490, which is going to prohibit discrimination against occupants of rent-regulated and rent-subsidized housing. This is absolutely something we want to get on the books. And lastly, I will let my colleague introduce it, but I am excited to be a co-prime sponsor on the Community Power Act. It's beyond time for police accountability and democratic empowerment for our communities.
Thank you. And I go to Councilwoman Narcisse, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Thank you. Significant racial and socioeconomic disparities exist among fertility patients accessing care. Significant racial and socioeconomic disparities exist among fertility patients accessing care. We know that for a fact. As a nurse for three decades, this is my responsibility to bring statistics to my colleagues so we can understand what's going on in our community. I'm sure you have knowledge as well, but I would like to share that with you. Black and Hispanic women have been less likely to receive fertility treatment, mostly due to lack of insurance coverage. It is important that we provide full coverage for fertility care and address the disparities that we continue to see across our system. Please, I would like for you to join me for the Reso 201, specifically, all my ladies, 31 women strong. We have to do it for each other. In addition to lack of insurance, don't forget, income also plays a part. Studies found that women with college degrees and income above $100,000 access fertility care more than women without high school diploma and women with income below $25,000. And we know that for a fact, in our community, we have many with lower than $25,000. Also, white women, they wear twice as likely to seek medical help to become pregnant compared to Black and Latino peers. We need to address access to healthcare and bring the real equity that we've been talking about. But also, we have to dis -- the stigmatize that going around it, we have to destigmatize and ensure people of color feel safe and comfortable seeking the care. It should not be with the money, it should not be with the color, or where you, where you come from. This is New York City. As a chair of hospital, I would like to have all my colleagues, not only the female, but the male, to support the Reso 201, resolution calling upon New York State Legislature to establish full insurance coverage for fertility treatments. Thank you in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Barron, followed by Councilwoman Mealy.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring my colleagues' attention to a bill, the Community Power Act. You know, the Black community is under attack by racists like the killer in Buffalo, who was treated with kid gloves by law enforcement, and by community violence because of poverty, unemployment, and mental health issues, but most importantly, by those who we pay to protect us. The police have been very violent toward us, and this act will take away the power from the commissioner to determine, as with the civilian complaint review board does, the commissioner determines the punishment for the police. The Power Act will have an elected civilian review board, elected by 17 members, it will be of the 51 districts, 17 will represent all 51 districts, and they will be voted in. In addition to that, an independent prosecutor will be voted in. So instead of having the Attorney General, Tish James, who prosecutes no police, no matter what they did to us during the George Floyd protests, none of them got prosecuted, well, we will have an independent office to do that prosecution. Right now, only 1% of the police office receives serious punishment from the police commissioner who determines that punishment. The Community Power Act, we all should sign on to that. And finally, I just want to say, Juneteenth was the day that the Black soldiers of the Civil War liberated us from the plantations, and we should not be celebrating the Fourth of July, I mean, the Fourth of July. It should not be celebrated, because it is a lie. And then finally, many people don't know that Memorial Day was started by Black freed, enslaved Africans to bury their loved ones who died in fighting against the Confederacy. It is a Black-started holiday. Do the research.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Mealy, and finally, Councilmember Lewis.
Today, I am proud to co-introduce 480, street co-naming for Cade Austin Tyler Lewin. Cade was a promising 12-year-old who was taken from his family on March 31, 2022. Imagine a 12-year-old watching TV on his phone in a car, eating Popeyes with his cousins, unaware that this would be his last meal. A grieving mother, cousins, and nieces, who will never be able to hug Cade again. While collecting everything needed to Cade, to do this co-naming, Cade's name added to this bill, his family and friends at the school also commend this body, remembering him as a local hero who fought to make everyone feel included. As we commemorate Gun Violence Awareness Month, I salute all the Cure Violence programs that came to City Hall today. We're honoring Cade's life, which was taken too soon, does not stop at co-naming a street. It simply starts here. We must continue to uplift the Lewin family and many other families who are facing similar hardships. We must continue to provide them with the resources they need to work in unity to alleviate gun violence all throughout this city, to make sure we do not have to post another name up due to another senseless act of gun violence. Today, I want to thank the Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for pushing this through. I want to thank all my colleagues, and just to commemorate it, you all are welcome to come this Saturday at 4:00, at 11:30, we will be doing a co-naming of Cade Lewin. So thank you, this body.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilwoman Lewis, followed by Councilwoman Reavis.
Thank you, Speaker Adams, for your leadership, and Majority Leader for the opportunity. From California to New York, legislators are scrambling to salvage women's healthcare and reproductive rights through health policies as leaders in other states continue to impede on healthcare equity and access. It's time the government stops policing women's bodies and address the historical disparities that limit access to quality healthcare, which includes critical resources to support high-risk pregnancies that can threaten the life of birthing people due to lack of reproductive preventative care. Most importantly, access to critical medical data will provide transparency on the state of reproductive health of New Yorkers. For example, 1 in 5 women live with polycystic ovary syndrome, also known as PCOS, and endometriosis, and are often misdiagnosed or go undiagnosed, resulting in complications for maternal and reproductive wellness. We have to prioritize maternal care to build a stronger and healthier community through access and equity. Today, I'm proud to introduce my bill, Intro 0482, a local law requiring the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to report on polycystic ovary syndrome and endometriosis. This bill will require DOHMH to report on the number of individuals diagnosed with PCOS and endometriosis at each H&amp;H hospital and medical facility. Additionally, I'm proud to join my colleagues in co-sponsorship of many bills, I'll just say the numbers for now, Intro 0490, Intro 0475, and Intro 0472. Thank you, Speaker Adams, and colleagues for the reproductive bills, and Andrea and Brenda from the Legislative Division for your tireless efforts to help us to get to this finish line. I urge all my colleagues to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, who's going to be so quick and efficient, I'm just, the Councilwoman Reavis to close.
Well, in that case, I'll drone on. I'm so glad to hear that Public Renewables just passed the Senate in light of this resolution that it introduced today, so I hope you will all join me in supporting this important piece of legislation, and we really look forward to working with our state officials on full implementation. I just want to encourage our colleagues that to continue to push hard on any and all related policy change to address the climate crisis we're in. And lastly, Sandra Vizcainos was a longtime Sunset Park resident and a community activist who emigrated to Sunset Park in 1977 from the Dominican Republic. She was a mom, a wife, a sister, a friend, a neighbor, and a longtime educator, and she was also the first educator in New York City to die of COVID. So I want to thank my colleagues for passing the co-naming of the street in her honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm now going to call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of June 2, 2022 is hereby adjourned.